Hey, welcome back, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. It's 4:27 PM. We're convened at the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West 940 North in Provo, Utah. We're going to begin with a roll call. I'm Rebecca Nielsen, the board president.
Jennifer Partridge, vice president.
Nate Van Wagenen, board member.
Lisa Boyce, board member.
Melanie Hall, board member.
Max Joyner, student member.
Will Widener, student member.
Gina Hales.
Board member. I have to say, students.
Terry McKeever, board member.
Devin Daly, business administrator.
Wendy Dow, superintendent.
Okay, and welcome to everybody who's here. In person, thank you so much for being here, everybody, and those online. Is there a motion to start our second study session of the day?
I know that we can name study sessions.
Okay, thank you so much. A motion made by board member Partridge. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, the board member Hales. We're now back in study session. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go with item number four on this agenda, and that is going to be a presentation about assessment and a PowerSchool proposal. We're going to give that time to Nate Mitchell and Michelle Aldridge.
Oh gee.
Are you ready to ask?
I'm so ready.
I just sent you the link again, so it's a copy. Well, we'll assume it's the right one. Get going. Okay. PowerSchool modules and interim assessments. These are some purchase requests that are coming from the assessment department. There are still some piggyback items on there that helped. Some other departments were asking, requesting some modules as well from PowerSchool, and so bundling them together got us some discounts. But we'll go through all of that through the slides, so. Okay, there's two purchase requests that we're seeking right now. One is an upgrade to the PowerSchool system. They have several different modules that we can add on to the system. We're requesting five: student analytics, an MTSS module, behavior tracker, Navient, which helps us with graduation requirements, CTE pathways, and a communications piece. The second one that we're requesting is a predictive interim assessment, and that would be a K-12 system in four different domains. So it's a battery of assessments. You'll hear me use NWEA.
That was exciting.
It's very important, the toast. You'll hear me use the company NWEA. There's specific reasons why we're using that one as our estimate. Number one is a product that we're using already in our elementaries from the company Hoot and Mifflin Hardcore. They have a math growth assessment that we've been using. They purchased NWEA, and they're going to phase out their math assessment. So we will be using NWEA math assessment in the future per our current contract, but we're looking to expand that as well. Because we already have a relationship with this company and NWEA kind of proxy-wise, we reached out to them for some estimates and quotes just to kind of get an idea of what that might cost us if we went with an interim assessment software. Doesn't mean we have to go with NWEA, but this is just our point of reference.
And is that our Acadia or Intermath assessment software?
So Intermath. So Intermath growth from HMH. Okay, so we can hit the toast. So trying to explain some of the purposes behind the PowerSchool modules. This is a story that's really near and dear to me. I often get emotional, so trying to convey this story, so I'll do my best to keep it together. I coached wrestling in Wasatch School District where I was also a science teacher. One of my wrestlers was also one of my science students, and on the mat, we referred to him as Toast. Toast was the just meakest kid you can imagine. But when he got on the mat, he would toast people. I mean, just smoke them. So we called him Toast. In our science class, I was going through the PLC process. I was really trying to get my students to understand essential skills. I had these formative assessments, common formative assessments with my other teammates. And Toast really struggled to pass one of these assessments. So I called him up to my desk, and this was, students are released, so I held him after class for a minute. And I just remember I hit him on the chest with the back of my hand, and I said, "Toast, why are you struggling with this? The rest of the wrestlers got it." As soon as I said that, I wanted to take those words back. I saw him getting emotional. And he goes, "Well, Mr. Mitchell, sometimes you move too fast for me." And my immediate reaction was, "I'll just slow down. I'll just slow down. I won't move on until I make sure that you get this." But I had at least the presence of mind to think, "You know what? Most of the students are getting it. It does them a disservice if I slow down for him." So I had the thought, and I asked him, "Toast, how do I know if I'm going too fast for you?" And I saw the realization, and he goes, "I've got to tell you." "Toast, I promise, if you tell me that I'm going too fast for you, I'll make sure you understand before I move on." And that's all he needed. He never once had to raise his hand in class to ask me to slow down. He just needed that little prompt to think about when it was going too fast. He started doing his own interventions. He started asking his classmates, and he found ways to cope with that. But it helped me to realize that that's at the heart of these interventions. It's these lead measures. So if you click on the next slide, what these PowerSchool modules do is allow us to track these lead measures. Every educator probably wishes they had a way to capture that experience that I had with Toast and put it in our gradebook somewhere. The gradebook system isn't really designed to capture lead measures like that, those behaviors, those things that help students to be able to do better on their assignments and assessments. So some of these, in fact, all of these modules have a form of lead measure that is going to help us to track. The student analytics portion, you'll notice right here where it says this row that says current. This is our current solution. This is what we're using right now. What software do we have available? We don't have really anything comparable to the student analytics. The closest thing we have is a product called Elevation, but it's specific only for our ML students, our multi-language students. The module student analytics in PowerSchool, what it does is it allows us to take all of our descriptive statistics, things like averages, subgroups, all that kind of stuff, and create reports specific for them. So it becomes a global way to track all subgroups, not just MLs. So we would be able to take the spending that we're using from Elevation and use that for the purchase of this module. One of the other things is that this student analytics module is a prerequisite to the other modules. It's kind of like the platform that the other modules sit on. So to get these other ones, we have to have the student analytics, if that makes sense. The MTSS module is really an intervention module. What it allows us to do, again, because of the student analytics, because the student analytics allows us to break down by really any subgroup, and we can create our own subgroups, then we can track an intervention for those kids. If we couple it with the behavior module, then we can create behavior interventions through the MTSS. So these are really cohesive modules that allow us to track those lead measures, like I had a lead measure, an intervention with my student. I would be able to create a tracker for that. Those students that weren't getting those essential skills, I would be able to say, "What are the behaviors that is influencing their lack of ability to be able to pass those? And I'd be able to create an intervention for that." We're currently doing a lot of this stuff by hand. So having a module would really save teachers, principals, our interventionists a lot of time if we had those more automated through these modules. Navient, again, this is a way to track, like, CTE pathways, for instance, graduation requirements. We don't have a system right now. Clay is doing a lot of that through Excel spreadsheets, tracking that. Counselors are trying to track that. There's not something embedded in our system right now to do that. Safe School Messenger and Safe Route, that would replace ParentLink. It has some translation services, but maybe what is going to be a pain point for our parents is that they, a pain point that this would solve for our parents is that they would be able to record attendance from their phone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's a pretty big update, right? There were some other softwares out there that did similar things that also had even more, I don't know, more robust translation services. But being able to package it all together was a cost savings and getting it all onto a single platform, it makes a lot of sense, especially if we're going to be training teachers in this. It's already a platform that they're familiar with and used to. So there was a lot of rationale for going with the PowerSchool module with that one. Current expenses, you'll see that what we're currently spending to do all of these modules sums up to $157,000.
Can I just mention, Nate, that doesn't include the manpower that is going into some of these things. Like, if you go into a student success meeting and you're watching how they're tracking every single child and what's happening there, it's pretty impressive, but it's just not following the kid to the next level. But anyway, it's pretty impressive, but we're expecting people to just do this on their own.
Absolutely. Thank you for that point.
And this is allow a secondary school to look at, say, the eighth graders that would be coming and to identify supports ahead of time potentially for students.
So there are those capabilities within the system to be able to do that. There are, PowerSchool is set up by rights. So I couldn't speak to whether or not our high school administration and/or teachers have rights to see outside of their institution, but PowerSchool has the capability to allow it.
But a middle school principal could say, "Here's a report around how students are doing coming your way," just so they.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We could create those.
Kids on grade level, kids whatever.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes, yeah.
We love this.
Yep, absolutely.
We're lacking sixth graders going to middle school, and the interventions or supports they've had in place don't transfer over easily. So, yes.
And then I have one more question, sorry.
No.
And is this, when you're tracking analytics, I guess my question is around the academic piece here. Are you inputting other testing that's already being done? Or is this additional or replacement testing? Right, because right now, we look at and we have, in some cases, three different beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessments for some of our students, right?
Yes.
And also, a lot of them don't have good test reliability with the RISE test scores. So I'm just curious to know, does this replace some of that? Does this give another kind of testing we have to do? Help me out.
So right now, what we're talking about is PowerSchool. It's not the assessment component. We'll be getting to that. But the short answer is yes. It will replace some, not all. We'll get into the specifics on which ones it does.
But Lisa, also, the data you're talking about will live in PowerSchool?
Correct.
And so the analytics is analyzing the data we put in.
It can include that other data as well.
Which is Acadia, which is drawn into Math.
Yes.
That we currently give.
Yeah.
That's the academic data that's being analyzed.
Yeah.
Right, and one of the benefits, again, with the student analytics component or module is when we do upload this assessment data in there, we can immediately break it down by subgroups.
Great.
Prior to that, it's all hand-done, right? Merging files, finding all those.
Click on that blue link that's under MTSS.
This one.
It doesn't matter, because both, there are different ways of looking at the data. This is a little example, but we're not going to, this has student information on it, so be careful here.
Slide it over.
You can see the top, those little plus bars. Bonnie, just click on those little pluses at the top.
She can't.
Sorry, Bonnie. Click on that. Every one of those opens up to a new set of data. Those all open to about five or six more rows of data, and all of this is hand-entered or manually input by people.
There's room for human error, too.
My department. Yeah, of course, there's human error.
There is absolutely room for human error.
So, yeah, so that's what we do now, is hand enter all the data.
We need to, yeah, we need to take off student data. I would be mad if my student data was there.
We can click on this one. Won't have any student data in there. So again, this is, so this is a file that I prepared for each school.
That's great.
But you can see, in order for them to get this, they have to wait for me to compile all of this. Whereas if it's embedded in the system, it's live, ready for them to go. And then, we also found that once I did finish it, there was human error. There were things where I had to go and fix and modify my formulas in order to get that for them. Okay, yeah, good questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the Elevation Educator's Handbook and Panorama. I know with Panorama, we just approved a contract a year ago. So if we approve this.
One more year, right, on that Panorama contract?
PowerSchool, how does that?
We do a renewal with Panorama each year.
So are we getting rid of Panorama, or?
So the proposal would be that, yeah, we would have a lot of redundancy with Panorama once we do the PowerSchool modules, and that would recoup the costs from Panorama in order to purchase the PowerSchool modules.
And most of, I will say this, a lot of our schools are already paying for Educator's Handbook, and some of them would prefer. Like, our high schools may not want to keep Educator's Handbook. They live mostly in PowerSchool is how they record disciplinary incidents. You can, yeah, I'm wrong, Daryl or Doug on that. But I feel like our elementary schools utilize Educator's Handbook quite a bit because they're just tracking different classroom types of things that are happening. We would still have, most of the schools are still, are paying for that on their own, out of their budget, and it still will talk. Educator's Handbook talks to PowerSchool. So it will upload into PowerSchool when you're dealing with a major incident. So it isn't something that's going to create problems. It actually does sync with those two systems. Because we have heard from teachers that they, there has been some lack of clarity around, like, where do I record this? How do I act? Absolutely. What's the right step? And if everyone's not doing it, it's an inaccurate measure. Yep.
And just being able to consolidate all of these, it does make it a lot easier. Again, teachers are already used to PowerSchool. And so getting this, it's not like there would have to be a huge in-depth amount of training. It's a platform. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one unless somebody got another question. Okay. This is essentially a summary. We broke down the four of the modules into this column, and then the communications piece into that second column. This is part of that bundling that helped us get some discounts by adding additional modules together. You can see, this would be the ongoing cost. There is a disparity between year one, there's some setup fees, integration, training that they do, versus year two, ongoing costs. And you can see that we're fairly close, congruent with if we substituted the current softwares that we use in order to purchase the PowerSchool modules. And Superintendent Dow's point, I think, is poignant here as well. There's a lot of manpower that isn't reflected here in these costs. Okay.
And I have to step out for a second, but did we say where that extra is coming from? Is that in our budget somewhere?
Oh, the price difference between these, the $9,000?
For those first initial costs.
Oh, so the initial year-one costs and this, I don't know. I had to defer to that.
It would be, I have to add.
Add it to the budget, okay.
There is also, again, with these PowerSchool modules, we're really talking about at-risk populations. There's also legislation coming out about early warning systems. That's a requirement. So a lot of this really goes into that. There's some EARS money that's associated with that that's designated specifically for these purposes. So that's, this is a place where we could use that funding. But I'm not a budget person.
I think one of the things that we have to recognize is that early warning system, our current system does not meet the requirements of that legislation. And so because you're having to go in and we have to handful all of that together, it's requiring us to have a dashboard that we can actually report out. And right now, if we had to do that, we would have to use our own manpower to do that. So this allows us to be able to report that out in that dashboard and to meet those legislative requirements. And I can send, I'd be happy to send you guys the actual legislation of those. And is there a potential, then, to access some state funding? Oh, no, there's not. It's an unfunded mandate, okay.
Fabulous.
But no grants out there around early warning systems? And how that? If we, I mean, we can always shift money from other, you know, we have a digital teaching and learning grant. So if you want fewer Chromebooks, then you can shift money in that direction. If you feel like this is more important than some of the other services that we're providing, then we can shift money from there. Those are the decisions that we're going to have to make there, for sure.
So I have a question about the manpower, man-hours. Like, what do you anticipate with tightening their load with man-hours with this system? What do you expect them to use their time? I'm guessing use it better, but I just wanted, like, let the public know, like, what they can be doing better with.
Oh, I think the issue is that a lot of these individuals are doing this after hours, like, in addition, and it's just taking us a long time. So it's like, if I want to ask anyone for data, then that's literally all they're doing rather than helping us to actually, like, if I need Nate to pull data, that's all he's doing rather than, I really need him to sit down with principals and with school leadership and say, "Okay, what is this data actually showing us? And what adjustments do we need to be making right now?" By the time he's able to pull all of that data, it's like we've lost time in how to make those adjustments. And it just makes it easier, I'm going to tell you, it doesn't make it easier for teachers in the immediacy, it makes it easier for them in the long run. Because anytime you have to train them on a new thing, that's always hard. But the idea is that we want them to go to a single platform to be utilizing this. Right now, they're going to Panorama, then they have Educator's Handbook, then they have PowerSchool, then they have Canvas, then they have. The goal is to try to simplify this for individuals.
But to clarify, you're saying there's still going to be plenty for them?
Well, there's plenty to do, yes.
Even though some of these man-hours are being really tight.
So with this, you talked previously about a parent communication tool that was, this is it? Okay. And then, would this replace Domo?
We can talk about Domo.
Okay. We don't have to do it now if you have it.
So I've got frequently asked questions. And whether or not this is redundant with Domo is one of those, so we can.
Okay, we can get to that later. And then the last one is, has anyone piloted this? I'm worried we're going to buy it and the teachers are going to, or is it something?
Yeah, so Washington School District uses it. Weber School District uses it. Carbon School District uses it. As a matter of fact, I've been working with the superintendent in Carbon to identify our key PowerSchool individuals. And the Washington School District will let us go and take some people to see what that's about. And I would think that the rollout, there's going to be pieces of this that need to go pretty quickly, but we could, we, in the areas where we feel like that's going to be more, there's going to be more resistance, then we can take individuals to go see what that looks like and what the benefits are.
Thank you.
We can even do that through Zoom, to be quite honest. But it's not something you would pilot, like, us at a school, save money and see how it goes, and then roll it to everyone? That wouldn't be cost-effective, is that right?
Part of it is because of those other softwares.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we have to do a renewal.
Right.
Either we have something or we don't.
Yeah.
You know, and so there is a sense of urgency because of that.
All right. Are we approving this? I'm just checking.
No, no. This is just for information, so then you can gather some questions. And we also want to make sure that principals get ahold of this so that they can ask some questions, and then we will bring it back. We didn't want to, we felt like this was a larger conversation with our budget, and we don't want to push anything through too rapidly. Yeah, he wants to talk about this assessment. Go ahead.
Assessments, okay. This is an AI-generated image. I've been playing with ChatGPT. So I'm going to walk through this kind of analogy or metaphor as it relates to assessments and this sailboat. So at the, we've got the captain of the ship. Their experiences allows for adaptation to unique circumstances. That's what we view the teacher in the classroom. We want to empower our teachers to be experts in the classroom. We want them to do differentiation, individual challenge. Their expertise is critical in the student learning process and the evaluation process. The rudder of the ship provides for immediate course correction. These are the formative assessments. They can be common formative assessments with a team. It could be your teacher formative assessments. But that allows you to change direction immediately. We have these lighthouses. Those define the boundaries, right? Keep you safe from the rocky shores. This is equivalent to the state's summative assessments and benchmark assessments. They define the rigor. This is what you need to teach. This is what needs to be done in the classroom. Those are the, those, these three things are the current assessments that we have in place. At the beginning of the year, we paused our interim assessment initiative that we started last year. There was a lot of headache surrounding that. And as I came in, principals were challenging me to find a replacement or find something to use for these interim assessments. When I talked to principals, they basically wanted that interim assessment to do everything. They wanted it to be formative. They wanted it to be predictive. They wanted, they wanted all of the things all wrapped up into one assessment. And as you can see here, you can't replace a rudder with a lighthouse, right? Assessments have specific purposes. What I'm asking for is a predictive assessment that's like a North Star, right? No matter where you are, it allows you to orient, find your place. I'm going to talk about the NWEA assessment. Again, this is frame of reference. This is, it's an assessment that I'm deeply familiar with. It's also an assessment that we have a relationship with HMH going into the future. I want to talk a little bit more about some of these, the use of assessments. The idea of this new legislation, this mandate coming in for at-risk and early warning systems, it's incredibly useful to have a universal screener to be able to do this. If you imagine a teacher in a classroom of 30 kids, you will have the first percentile student sitting next to the 99th percentile student. We're asking teachers to differentiate. Teachers have to first be able to figure out which student is which. They need to know if they're sitting in a ninth-grade English classroom. Is this student performing at a fourth-grade level? Teachers are not trained at that level of discrimination to identify the needs of those students. Our current state systems don't do that. They tell you on-grade level, off-grade level. They don't give you an approximation of this student is performing like a third grader. We need something to be able to do those interventions. We instituted an intervention system at one of the high schools I was at. We used the NWA assessment to do that. We identified the students based off of a LEXILE score produced from the NWA assessment and assigned students to an intervention class at high schools. The idea was, as they took this as a benchmark system, as you mentioned earlier, so that there would be a beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessment with these. Students that met an exit criteria based on that test immediately were allowed to be released from the class. And so our plan was, we were going to celebrate the heck out of these kids. These students had to replace an elective class with an intervention, a literacy intervention class. So the first student that we got that met the exit criteria was in the middle of a term. We brought them down to the office, and we had a little celebration. And we were so excited for this student. We wanted them to pick their new elective class that they would be able to replace their literacy intervention. And the student looked at us and said, "I have to leave? This is the first time I've ever felt smart." That was a huge win, being able to identify. Being able to identify those kids' needs, give them the specific challenge that they need, give them their zone of proximal development. I don't know how I would have been able to do that without a universal screener. I don't know how I would have found those kids. Our EOLAC Curriculum Committee, Curriculum Adoption Committee, put in their notes that we need a universal screener. They're asking for it. Principals are asking for it. We already did the math adoption for it. We, we have a history of teachers wanting and needing these types of assessments. It is a big cost for this specific assessment. There are some assessments that we would replace. Currently, there are some secondary screeners that we're using for literacy, Renaissance and Reading Plus are two of those. Intermath growth measure is being replaced, not at our request, but by the company which we've already mentioned. There is a $3 discount per student that's associated with that, so we're doing that currently from grades K-6. So approximately $21,000 savings there. We would also replace the COGAT assessment. Please, for nothing else, if we move on from the COGAT assessment. And so those, those would be a few areas to be able to recoup some costs. They do offer a 10% off with a three-year commitment. But then the ongoing cost you see would be $226 for the NWA assessment.
The NWA is a little more predictive of, for example, rise scores, correct?
Not just a little more, a whole lot more. In fact, the NWA, and, and thanks for bringing this up.
I would love to look at that data.
So the NWA assessment is more predictive of ACT results than ACT Aspire Plus. So there's, there's a little caveat for you. One of the things with that, that in, if I was writing criteria for choosing a predictive assessment, I would want to know what it's predicting when you take the test now, not if you continue on some imaginary trajectory, which is what we currently have with the state system. If you keep progressing, then yes, we would predict that you would do well on the ACT. What the NWA allows us to do is say, if you got this, they use a RASH indicator scale, they call it a RIT. If you got this RIT score today, this is what you would score if you had taken the ACT instead today. So if you took it as an eighth grader, the NWA, and you scored, and NWA predicted you to get a 22 on the ACT, they expect you to get a 22 that day on the ACT. So the predictive power of NWA is amazing. So thanks for that reminder. I think, unless there's other questions about this, I've got an FAQ slide, yeah?
Really quickly, so if I'm understanding right, this would be something, by and large, outside of those savings, kind of a new cost for us.
New cost.
The other one's kind of really replacing some things. This is much more like, we're taking on, because we haven't had this type of assessment, right?
That's right. It, it's a glaring hole in the assessment system. And Provo's not unique in this. This is, this is what I would say is a national need that is overlooked. It's not, it's not fully understood. I mentioned that attending the secondary principals PLC at the beginning of the year, even educators want assessments to do all of the things, right? And so there's not, not clear understanding of, of what assessments are for.
Nate, I have a good question.
Yeah.
We use the COGAT to help place kids in our CAS program, right?
Yes.
Is this gonna be a good replacement for that process?
This, in my estimation, is a much better replacement than the COGAT assessment.
I think the other piece that's interesting is that we have a huge data desert, if you will, in our secondary schools, in the sense that we don't have a lot of data that, that's coming in. And so our teachers are really doing the very best that they can with the information that they have, but, but they don't have a lot to compare it to. And so that's where you get principals that are saying, well, how, how do we bring a PLC together and, and look at this data? I mean, we just created this, so we don't even know if this is actually effective or if we're actually adjusting the instruction in the right way. Whereas having the same kinds of access to data that we already have, in many cases at the elementary level, would be helpful, especially in those core areas as we're looking at trying to improve our overall academic performance.
This is an incredibly important point, and I want to drive it home.
Yes.
So I was sitting, I, I was sitting in a longitudinal, longitudinal research class. And the professor asked, what are your goals, right? So each student had to get up and say what their goals were. I stood up and said, "I don't understand why in education we are not using longitudinal research. I don't, we, we hold kids for 13 years. We should be the best in the world at longitudinal data." And, and so I said, "My ambition is to create, to, to do some longitudinal studies with, using, using our state assessments." And the professor looked at me and said, "I wish that were possible. Each test changes year to year. It's not a longitudinal assessment system. We don't have a way to do longitudinal assessments in the state of Utah. NWA would allow, allow us to do longitudinal studies." The other thing that it allows us to do is, you know, we were just talking about, what's the, the specialized program of finding this?
Child find.
Child find, thank you. Should have been a lot easier for me to come up with that. So this, this idea of child find, when students are in an intervention, and what superintendent just talked about, they might look like they're growing based off our own teachers' data, but how do you know if they're really growing, right? How do you know if the intervention is working in a, in such a way that would preclude them from, from us using child find and giving them extra services? NWA allows us to do that. When we used NWA in my former district, that was one of the big side effects that we didn't even realize, was that our special ed team was able to say, "We have longitudinal data that tells us that the interventions for these students aren't working, we can qualify them." It was as simple as having, having this assessment in place. So that was a big one. Being able to evaluate programs, when you have a consistent measure, we can, we can evaluate any program based off of that in terms of student achievement because we have a longitudinal assessment. My professor used to, used to say, "If you want to measure change, don't change the measure." This would allow us to be able to really get after program evaluation.
Is it okay if I share this? Can you send this presentation to me so I can share it with the board? I don't know that it.
Is that on board?
Yeah.
Do you have it?
Okay, okay.
No, we don't have this.
I may, I may have made some changes after I updated, after I sent the board docs. So we'll make sure you have the updated version of the slide.
Would NWEA help us with trust lamp and FIP?
Yes.
School improvement.
But my question is, is it another, like, we have, you know, like I'm saying, several assessments. So if I'm a third grade teacher and I have to do my Acadiance, ELA assessment and my Acadiance math, and I guess I'll jump to fourth grade so I can ask, and my Intermath, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
And now I have to do, like, at a certain point, I might get frustrated by all of the assessments, even if I understand that they're different tools with different purposes, at a certain point I might also be like, I need classroom time to just provide my instruction.
I, I get exactly what you're, what you're asking. So one of the, one of those assessments you listed, the Intermath growth, it's just a replacement.
Right.
We have that, it's replacing. The COGAT would be a replacement. The, the.
So would it replace Acadiance then?
It would not replace Acadiance. And again, it's very specific purposes. The Acadiance, both reading and math, are formative assessments. You know, going back to the idea of the rudder, or the sailboat, that's the rudder, right? NWA, it does not have formative value. A teacher couldn't take the data from this and say, "Here's how I'm going to create my interventions for this specific kid." It's, it's a different, it's a different beast entirely. That doesn't change the sentiment that teachers have, and this is what you're talking about. So we'll skip to the next slide, please, Bonnie, that's our FAQs. Are we over assessing? That's the heart, I think, heart of the question that you're trying to address here. And this is, this is something I'm incredibly passionate about. From my perspective, it's nearly impossible to over assess. When I talk to highly effective teachers, we're in a perpetual state of assessment. We're saying fist to five. We're saying, if you think it's A, B, C, go to this corner, this corner, this corner, right? We're doing thumbs up, thumbs down. We're, we're walking around the room. If, when I talk to the, to teachers that are high performing, even if they don't articulate in this form, what they're asking is, how do I know that this kid got it, right? We're constantly assessing. So the idea of over assessing is a little bit foreign to me in, in that regard. I also feel like, I'm gonna use some sports analogies here.
Okay, Nate, I'm gonna, you have like five minutes.
Oh, man!
We're already behind schedule, so it might be one of those situations where we have to, like, have you write out some of these things and address the questions in a, in an email or something that can go out to the board, so.
So wrapping up this one, I wanted to spend so much more time on over assessing. Really, students who are confident, athletes who are confident, look forward to game day. Students who are confident, they look forward to assessments. The culture of assessment hinges on those classroom teachers. They can create positive cultures around assessment. It's totally possible. These, again, these assessments have different purposes, and I'd love to have more conversation about this if we have, if you want to catch me after. Well, I won't be here after, but another time. Hit me up. I'll, I'll, I could talk about that all day. How are these purchases saving time? We've covered that a little bit already, is the idea that these, they're, they're just The interim assessment, the NWA assessment, we were asking teachers to create those. And last year, teachers made those assessments. They had, they had to make them, they had to analyze them, aggregate them, do all their, all of this becomes so much easier with a system in place that, that can handle it. How we ensure school staff are properly trained? Lot of kudos to Superintendent for her vision on instructional coaches. By far, the best experience, my educational experience, was my time as an instructional coach. Being able to have help at the point of struggle is incredibly valuable. We would have that embedded. We, we've already been talking about the front loading that we would do in some of those PD days before school starts. We would have that embedded throughout the school year as well. Oh, question about Domo. Definitely need to cover this. Domo, again, trying to shorten this, Domo does not innately do data origination. It's not a data entry format. What it does do very well is data visualization and data analytics. Contrasting that with the student analytics that we get in the Power School modules, that is descriptive statistics. That's just subgroups, averages, totals, that sort of a thing. If I want to do longitudinal studies, if I want to do linear regressions, if I want to do correlations, I need Domo, right? That's the program evaluation component. It also, at the Power School, doesn't have dashboards. There's no student dashboard. There's not a parent dashboard, right? We can create those in Domo. So they do have disparate purposes. Why is this new software better? Number one, it's just aggregating it. Number two, we talked about the different softwares that it's replacing. We're replacing all of those softwares and doing a lot more. We talked about the things that teachers are doing right now by hand. We're also getting that with the Power School modules that we didn't have now for very similar costs. But then having a platform that teachers are familiar with, I think is also a good plus. Okay.
You're awesome.
Thanks.
Good luck, Nate. Thank you. I read through your slides yesterday, and it's so much better in person when you're explaining them.
Oh, thank you.
All right, awesome. Let's go ahead and move on to item number five on our study session. We are going to be talking about our first reading. We're gonna have our first reading of the amended belonging statement, and we're going to take that part.
Yes. So we have our cultural belonging statement. I mean, that's, all of this is up for change, right? But we had our diversity, equity, and inclusion statement that we put out in 2020? 21?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
It was twenty-two.
Anyway, which was our way of just letting everyone in the district know, all families, all students, everybody, realize that we see them and we hear them, and that we want to make sure that we provide for the students' unique needs. With HB, I can't remember which, 264 or something like that, we can no longer use the words diversity, equity, inclusion together?
261.
261, 261, thank you. We, we don't, we can't use those words together, and so we want to make sure that we are complying with the law. I also wanted to make sure that we didn't just change words, right? I wanted us to be able to really, I wanted to, to be able to better, I, this is, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but as I was thinking about it, I wanted to be able to express better how we want people to feel that they belong in our district, right? It's kind of part of our strategic plan. We want people to feel welcome, we want people to come, we want people to be a part of the school district. And so we changed this up a little bit and got a little bit of feedback already from you guys, let you take a look at it. And so it's just here. If anyone has any additional, I know that there were a couple of, of suggestions, and I didn't know what to do with them, but we can go ahead and have a quick discussion here about any concerns or any changes that you guys would like to see.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? I just want to say, I'm happy with what we have so far. I think we're in, going in the right direction. Don't have any major changes or anything that's like we need to make? Anybody else?
There's one thing I want to, I just want to address really quick while you guys are thinking. There's been some questions about whether we can use the words at all, any form of diverse, any form of equity, and any form of inclusion. And I read over, I sent it to you guys, but for the public, I, I scoured the bill, and I don't think that means that we can't use any of that. Of course, I want to be mindful, and I want to make sure that we are using appropriate terms and things like that. And so you will see those words a couple of, I think it's three times we have those words in there. But it's part of a, a bigger thing rather than just diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I just wanted to address that, because I want the public to see that. Sorry. Does anybody have?
I had a question about, we can't, this isn't a policy, so are we putting it on the website for feedback like we would a policy? Or?
What does adoption look like, right?
Yeah. I'm, I'm open to putting it out there for.
I think we should.
I would like to.
I, I want to say that when we adopted it, the first time we did take it, the vote.
We didn't.
I remember.
I remember you guys doing that.
I think we need to do the same thing we did with the first one, so if we put it up, we need to put it up again.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't remember what it was, to be honest.
I would be fine with putting it up on the website for people to get feedback.
I just want to say, I really appreciate, like, I think that bill was trying to get at something more than just those words. I'm not saying it's what you're saying, but right, like, it's about some principles and some checks in our system that we really are not discriminating in any way. And I really love the feeling here that I think echoes everyone's belief, which is, every student should sit in a class and think, "I belong here as a learner." And then the second thing they should do is look around and see any other person in that class and think, "And they belong here as a learner." And that is saying this for our students, but also for our teachers, for our families and our community. And so I like the work that you've done here, and I'd love to hear from our community about this. I think this is an important piece for Provo, you know, as a city and as a community and as a school district, that we talk about what does it mean to welcome people in and, and to create something really special. And so I would love to hear from people about this. Thanks for your work on it.
Thank you. I'll add really quickly to that. And in doing this work, I do think the places where diversity is still included in this, I think that we are all better when we do just remember that our differences are a strength. And I think that's what this is speaking to, right? It's something to be celebrated, it's something that we, as a community, in our schools, in our city, I guess you can go down our homes, our schools, our cities, right? That these things are strengths, and we build on that. And that's part of, I'm a learner that belongs here, and you're a learner that belongs here, right? So that, to me, the spirit of this, which I appreciate.
Any else? Okay, I think then what we should do is put this out on the website for, I don't know, a little, a set amount of time. We usually do a month or two weeks, or about a month, right?
We can do it through, and then just put it on board agenda for May 28th, and just say feedback is due by May 24, which is a Friday.
Okay.
And to make sure, though, that we are in compliance, is there a deadline by which we would need to take down our old statements?
July 1st.
Just to make sure. July 1st, okay, so that gives us time to.
May?
Actually, I think this bill went into effect 30 days.
Actually, I think this bill went into effect 30 days after the governor signed it, so.
So we should make sure.
I think so.
That's what I read over it. It said July 1st.
If it said July 1st, then we're fine.
But, 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 no, we need to get it again, because I don't know if I was reading it right.
The last line of the bill was, this will take effect July 1st. I don't know if they had a different section in it that said this part is then May 1st, or some other point.
I'm just going to make sure that we're...
So in general, it's July 1st.
May 24th is the date we said.
And then we can put it on the May 28th Board meeting, our final reading.
Thank you. Will that be by, on the same part of the website as our policy?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be in the policy section. Okay, great. And Gina, can we continue to just give our feedback too, if we have any more?
Yep, if you have any more feedback, we'll have it.
Okay. Thanks Gina. Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much for your work on that. All right, we're ready to start our strategic planning session.
She said she'd be back.
Of course, of course.
I have her presentation, I can put it up. Or do you want me to do it? No, if you have, if you have it, please do it, that'd be great.
Any updates that we have around the planning committee to give before she gets here?
We had our last, we had our last committee meeting. What do I want to say? Not committee, just this last week, and it was great.
So you're going to see some priorities, goals, and strategies, and now what we have tasked our leadership team, is that they're divided basically into committees like that.
No, we're ready to go through it. She's like, oh, I'm up, it's on the screen.
But as a result, now they're going to start putting together what are called KPIs, or key performance indicators, and they'll just kind of map those out, like, if this is our overall goal, then where do we need to be each year for the next five years?
But we're going to talk first about whether or not we really want all those strategies as priorities.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
It's all you.
All right, great, thank you. Well, let's go ahead and get started. Happy to be back again, Renee Zorora. So, like I'm sure Wendy just mentioned, today we're just going to look at where we've landed on core values, vision, and mission. Then we're going to have a discussion around Portrait of a Graduate. And then you're going to preview the priorities, goals, and strategies to let us know initial thoughts about them. We are in the drafting phase. We just got feedback from the steering committee, so these are going to change based on feedback. But if you have any additional feedback to add to it, we'd love to hear that. Okay, so core values, this is where we landed, and we shared these with the focus groups that we did. Belonging, creativity, empowerment, growth, and community. And we got these definitions based on what you all shared last time. When we shared them with the focus groups, people liked them a lot and had some minor suggestions for tweaks that we're going to talk about with Cabinet. We got some feedback from the steering committee, but for the most part, people said, we just want to keep these, we like them. So anyway, I'll give you a moment just to scan, that this is basically what we talked about from last time. And I will talk to Cabinet about whether we want to make any minor tweaks based on what we heard from the focus groups. But Steering Committee had like one or two maybe ideas, so. Thirty seconds to scan.
I'm just glad I got the word greatness in there.
I need, yes, go ahead. So they wanted to make sure to keep all five of them?
For values.
There was a little bit of discussion from the focus groups about possibly doing some combining to four, and they gave some ideas. The steering committee overall said they felt like we should stay with these, but we are going to talk just to Cabinet, just to make sure that they feel good with these as well. But for the most part, everyone was, most people were good with, just keeping five. Okay, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So vision, the Provo City School District is a vibrant learning community where all students become lifelong learners and engaged community members. Again, the only feedback we got was about possibly changing the word vibrant or changing the word engaged. And so we're going to talk with Cabinet about whether they want to change out any two words, but for the most part, everyone else was really good with this, possibly with just changing one or two of those words.
We talked about like inspiring, an inspiring learning environment, you know, so.
I love vibrant.
Which they're all going to say the same thing, exactly. We kind of just felt like we were wordsmithing.
Yeah, and I didn't put all the feedback from it, but it was just basically a list of other things we could think about. So we're just going to talk with Cabinet, but this is the direction we're heading in there.
Unless you have really strong feelings about that you hate that.
Yeah. Any comments or anything? Okay. And then we shared this with the focus groups, welcome, educate, and inspire. People were split on this one. Really split on whether they absolutely loved the simplicity, or whether they just felt there should be a little more meat to it. When we talked to the steering committee, still kind of split, but the majority said stick with the simplicity. So this is kind of where I've landed, but I am going to talk with Cabinet about whether we want to change any of that, but this is, I wanted to share at least what we shared with the focus groups and got feedback on.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, Jennifer, the, do you remember the graphic you made? When this was in the context of the graphic, everyone was like, oh yeah, that's awesome. Like, it really helped to put it with all of the other words, because they're, they're really part of a bigger thing.
Core values.
Yeah, you've got, all those other words aren't a thing.
Yeah, a community member who pointed out to us that those five values line up with those three, right? So you can line them up.
And our survey results. They line up too.
And it puts on a three.
And it's a little good.
Okay, any feedback about that before we move on? All right, we'll just move us on then. Focus group feedback on Portrait of a Graduate. So we are going to discuss this. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So just a reminder, the Portrait of a Graduate articulates the hopes, aspirations, and dreams that we have for our students when they leave our system. Usually they are short, although we know in Utah, there's a more comprehensive one that we're going to look at in just a minute. Let's go to the next slide. Here are just a few examples from other districts who've taken some different approaches to how they made theirs. We've seen this before, so let's go to the next slide. And here is the one for the state of Utah. We shared all of this with the focus groups, and nobody disagrees with the Utah one. It's very comprehensive, and they love the words. But the feedback that we did get is, it is a lot of words, and a lot for anyone to remember or really kind of go deep on if it's so many pieces. And so the majority of people said, we would like to possibly narrow some down to make them Provo-specific on what we are going to go deep with, knowing that the whole thing still applies to everyone in the state of Utah. There were some people, though, that said we should just keep the state of Utah one, even, you know, because it is comprehensive. But the majority of people said we should probably narrow it down. And so let's go to the next slide. When we asked them if we should narrow it down, we asked them what would be some of the most important words to use to make it in the smaller version. And you can see the word cloud. The ones that are larger are the ones that showed up more often. Give you a moment to scan that. And then we shared all of this with the steering committee this past week, and they narrowed it down even further. So let's go to the next slide. It's interesting, wasn't problem solver really small on the other one?
It was medium. Go back a slide.
Go back a slide. Part of it, though, they looked at, they thought about terms, which, what are the broader overarching terms that could actually incorporate several? And they kind of put some bullet points of, this can be woven into the definition for this category. So, and we, in the end, will write definitions if we go with a shorter version. But we also had some other suggestions that came from the steering committee that I thought were good to look at, in case you wanted to consider them for a shorter version. Let's go to the next slide. We had some groups that actually came up with ones that resonate with something for this district. And then we also had the shorter version of the Utah one. Categories of the Utah one. So I want to just give you a moment to kind of read through these, and then we're just going to discuss what direction we want to go in. Okay, so let's just open it up to discussion. First of all, do we want a shorter one for PCSD? Or do we want to just stick with the one for the state of Utah? And if we do want a smaller one for our strategic plan, what direction do we want to go? Do we want to use one of these, or go back and just pick some words out of the other ones that resonate with our stakeholders?
I think, I say shorter.
I would agree.
And while I really like mastery, autonomy, and purpose, I don't think those are words that translate well to students, truthfully. And so...
I don't mean shorter out of these, I mean shorter than the...
Oh, right. No, I'm just giving feedback in general to that. Like, I like those words, and especially when it's all spelled out with the different words on the Utah one, those are categories that then they have. But I'm just saying, if you ever just see those words, these other words mean something, right? Immediately, without a definition attached. So I like that about the other ones. And I like the PCSD one.
PCSD is my favorite. Does it, academics is like the biggest one. I guess those are all part of academics? Academic achievement or mastery?
I think critical thinking and problem solving is what it takes for academic mastery, but I don't know if you like that. I mean, I will say, I was very inspired at my table at the strategic planning meeting this week by one of our teachers, who she literally takes that Utah Portrait of a Graduate with her fifth grade class. She has indicators that each student looks at for each of those things to see how they're doing and how independent they're becoming in those specific attributes, skills, mastery, et cetera. So that made me think, wait, but let's make sure this Portrait of a Graduate really will translate for something teachers use to guide their practice and students use to guide their learning. So I feel like maybe that still will apply to academic mastery without saying, but I don't know.
As long as it covers it.
And I, 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 this is my personal thought coming out. I think mastery is important, but like you're saying, these things get you there, and I guess I would rather my child be able to problem solve and collaborate than just have certain things memorized. Memorize your master, right? It's like, okay, I don't know this thing, how do I get there? Okay, I'm going to be a problem solver, I'm going to critically think. So I just find value in those more than just saying, I can...
Do we keep collabor, so are we supposed to choose one, or are we keeping both collaborator or critical thinker? They, I think, I think the team that wrote it, I think, put like, choose one. I mean, I think they were like, these are our ideas for what a C could be. How about a collaborating critical thinker?
I like the collaborator because it's...
I, I love the idea of like an acronym if it...
Because we're in education, so.
But I think as we keep working on this, I think we need to look, do these really cover the four or five I think are most important? And if they don't, then we just pick the ones that work and still make a cute graphic and just don't have an acronym for it.
Because earlier, that, when you first were showing different districts, the one, is it George, what's the school with the G at the top?
Yeah, if you want to go back.
This one. I feel like that's a really lovely Portrait of a Graduate right there, when you read through those things. So I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be an acronym to be useful.
Yeah, and I will say, the S on PCSD, the self-starter, I'm not sure that that one was really, I think it was, they were trying to brainstorm things with an S.
Self-sufficient.
Yeah, it could be something else. Or, and on the Provo one, they said the O could be outstanding citizen, or, or they put outstanding academics. I just thought that was, I didn't put that on there, because I thought it was weirded. I didn't think the wording was right, but that's another idea.
I think these are getting at more of what you want a graduate to be. A graduate is not just someone who can pass tests and who has a GPA. And I mean, we know that all of those things are figured in other ways, but if we're really trying to identify, what do we want students to be leaving Provo City School District with, these are the, these are the characteristics that we want them to have, because that's going to allow them to be successful no matter what path they choose. And it's going to allow them to be successful in their personal life, their academic life, their professional careers, whatever that is, so. That's why I like that better than mastery, autonomy, and purpose. Because I don't know, I don't, I don't really feel like that motivates me.
No, it probably should, but it assumes like, I don't even know.
I just, I want to, the whole time we've been talking about mastery versus other things, so I just have to point out that our standards-based grading system is all about mastery.
Oh, yes, it is.
So, so I don't, I don't want to completely discount that.
But they may have to go out into the world not in that same system.
Right, true. I'm just, I'm just pointing out, everybody's saying, well, I don't know about mastery. Well, I'm like, that's totally the whole, like, point against, or, you know, behind this gradient system. So it just felt funny to me, you know? Contradictory. And I'm only saying that because you guys know how I feel about standards-based grading, and I hate it, so anyways.
Because the S, the S could be standard-based grading.
I think part of it is, we zero in on the mastery piece, and really, when I think about this, I think about that you're a learner on a continuum. It isn't, I'm never going to be a master in all of the things, right? It's just about, am I getting better at it over time as I, as I learn more about it and develop different strategies? I think that, I think that's, I think that's where we have to get in terms of that, because it adds so much pressure to be like, well, I have to master this. It's like, see, how much have we really mastered? You know, like, no one, no one.
And, and you want to be set up for success, but that doesn't mean you're going to be successful right away, right?
I know this, last week, they had a group of thinkers gathered to look at the future of what education, like, what do collegiate graduates need, or what, to prepare them to work in a world where AI becomes a bigger and bigger part of the world? And they brought in kind of Utah's top AI scientists to have this conversation with university professors and educators, and trickling down into even into the high school level, right? And they were looking at more of dispositions and skills than content they need to have mastered. But to your point, like, how are they at thinking critically, asking hard questions, being willing to fail? Yeah, and so I think all of these things are what makes a graduate ready to our mission, vision, and goals, right? Ready to really go out and continue to be a learner and a contributor. Like, we have to be able to pivot, we have to think and ask questions, we have to be able to challenge ourselves with a question we've never considered before. I doubt even in certain spaces that our college graduates are graduating, that they, that our professors know the things that our college graduates already are learning before they get there. So I'm just saying, I, I really like thinking about what our graduates need to be, who they need to be to be prepared, versus what specifically do they have to know? And that's not, you know, I'm, I like the word excellence, so I'm not saying, don't be isolated. I'm just saying, I really appreciate this thinking about that things.
The other thing is, our graphic designers can also do creative things when they sort of build what this looks like. If you have certain ones, and then it's like built on a foundation, or like academic mastery going around the core, you know, I don't know, there's just different ways they can do that if we want to try and include academic mastery or something in the picture without having it be the four or five or whatever. Any other kind of thoughts on where we go with this? If not, I can go back to Cabinet and have us just draft up something and bring you one or two just to look at. Maybe one with change, maybe changing self-starter, just self-sufficient, and then one we can maybe build using the other words from the other sheets, if you'd like. Are we forcing this?
Yeah, no, I don't feel like we have to force an acronym either. Yeah, it's fun if it works.
It's still into mastery.
Or you, you know, like the G do a P with the colors.
Okay, well then, should we just do that instead?
I think we can just, I think we can even just take it to Cabinet and then have us think about some different ideas about what that, what that actually looks like, and then kind of go from there, so we can start thinking about that piece.
Okay, sounds great. All right, well then, we'll go ahead and move on to the next piece. So now we're going to look at the district priorities, goals, and strategies. As we look at these, the, especially the strategies are kind of a work in progress. We are going to work with them to make them look parallel, to flesh them out because you'll see some have more detail than others. So, but we just got feedback from all the steering committee. And so this is a progress, process that we're about to start working on. But the structure of our plan, we'll have a set of priorities. And then under each priority, like kind of goal category, we'll have a few goals. And then we'll have our benchmark, KPIs, which is how we'll measure success, and a set of strategies. And today we're going to show you priorities, goals, and just the strategies. They're still working on developing KPIs. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So these are the draft priorities that we have landed on based on feedback from the steering committee. Cabinet helped us identify these, but, and also the focus groups. So we've landed on academic achievement, opportunities for all, wellness and safety, stewards of resources, and family and community engagement. And so for each of these categories, we had different cabinet members work on, work with their teams to develop a few goals. So we'll look at next at just the goals for each category. And then the slide following will have the goals with the strategies, which is a lot of content. I think what would be most helpful is to get your initial thoughts about the goals that got written to make sure you feel like we're headed in the right direction. That, and then any comments you have about the strategies are helpful too, but it is a lot of content, so. Okay, so here are the three goals for academic achievement. Increase the percentage of students achieving proficiency in core subjects by 15% within five academic years. Increase the percentage of students who meet college and career readiness benchmarks by 5% within five academic years. And establish and fully integrate a positive behavioral interventions and support framework across all schools, resorting in a measurable reduction of disciplinary incidents by 20% within five years. So in the academic world, these are the goals that they have selected. Do you have any thoughts about, how should we, how should we do this, Wendy? Should we?
I don't know.
Because it's a lot, I mean, so any initial thoughts?
It's from the steering committee, you said?
Uh, the cabinet developed.
I was going to say, how do they know?
No, 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 no. No, no.
They did do a lot of work.
The steering committee gave us, helped us develop, narrow down the categories. So the goal areas, we used their feedback or priority areas.
And then they gave feedback on each specific goal, the strategies, they gave feedback on all of them.
Yeah. So after they helped us develop the priority areas, the cabinet developed a set of goals that we took to the steering committee last week to get feedback.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're about to make some revisions, but I just want to get any initial thoughts on these goals that got selected.
I have a question.
Or questions, yes.
Question maybe this is for. I'm interested in why there's such a big difference between 15% and the 5%? Because increasing proficiency and college and career readiness benchmarks seems like you would want them to increase both by a similar percentage. But are they different enough measures that that difference in percentage is okay? Or like, I'm just curious about why there's such a big difference.
I think there's a couple of reasons. I think one is to start pushing ACT scores by that kind of a, by improving that score or by when you're looking at a graduation rate that's already sitting at 90 or 91% to push that to 95 or 96. That's, that's quite, I mean, I don't know if cabinet can speak up a little bit more, but that.
ACT has a smaller scale.
Yes.
Okay. ACT is to 36 versus.
Yes. Okay. So when we're starting to look at that, we're looking at, we're, we're trying, we're going to end up taking this overall college and career readiness benchmark, which is part of our Utah report card. But it breaks down each of those things. So you're, you're looking at each of these subcategories to push that whole number up. And I think the concern was with all of those different components adding in, 5% was, we could make it more rigorous. I don't, I don't think.
I want to be realistic. Like, I, I just want to make sure those are both realistic.
I think what I, I think what I would probably give the recommendation for cabinet to do with this is to really work with Nate Mitchell in research and assessment and say, based on what we have, do we feel like that's rigorous enough? Like, for some of our schools, to move it by 15%, if they're already performing at 70% or something, that's going to be a heavy, a heavy lift for them. For other schools, it's like, why isn't it not 25%? Like, you know, so we're trying to look at, remember, a whole district and what does that look like? And some schools are going to have individual goals that are going to be a little bit different than that. But I think maybe the percentages are what we probably need to tweak a bit more.
Well, and 15%, that's 3% a year, right? So that's kind of looking at that growth.
That makes sense.
And they did 15% based on our trend data. So our trend data is showing a one to two, it is really showing like a 1% increase. So they're like, and in some cases it's decreasing. So if they're going to have a consistent increase of 3% per year, they felt like that's actually, you know, going against the trend line in that case. Doug, you were going to say something about, like, is your mind mathematician?
Sure. Well, this committee had the benefit of Nate being on the committee.
Okay, yeah.
We looked at historical trends, we looked at neighboring districts, we looked at top districts, we looked at all those sorts of things. So now that is perfect, but we tried to look at those things so that it was customized to the exact, you know, scores that we were going to find. So there certainly is, without the KPIs that we care to look at, it's hard for us to have that conversation. But our template was to be smart, create a measurable goal. So we put some percentages there. We thought that we're ambitious but realistic.
Oh, Melanie.
So my question is about five academic years. Where do we, where does the number five come from? Like, why five years?
Because that's how long the strategic plan is usually in place before you, before you reevaluate and decide, are we still on the right track?
And when you see the, the fully built out product, they're working on the KPIs that shows where we are now and then each year where we'll be to meet the five-year goal.
Okay, so the third one, I mean, I get the behavior affects academics, but it does feel out of place to have that in academic one. So I would love to hear the rationale why they're not in wellness and safety.
Sorry, someone was on that committee that works both in the academic world and the behavioral domain. So I put that out there and you'll find that it repeats in another part of the tool. So it really is a rough draft. So in other words, we threw everything out there and we hope we can weed it down. So you're right. The third goal was an attempt to say, you know, students that are in learner-ready is very important, but it might fit under another heading more appropriately. And I think you'll see it there.
I think part of the issue is once you get to wellness and safety, what you're going to notice is there's a lot of goals that are actually tied to more than just students because we want wellness and safety. So when you start adding all of that, that's going to add up to a lot of goals. So the concern was PBIS actually, when you start looking at the number of discipline referrals, it leads to missed instructional times. If you're missing that instructional time, it absolutely impacts academic performance. So I think a piece of this was, that is a precursor. Like, if a teacher can't even teach for a solid 15 minutes because there's just so much that's happening in terms of behavior, that is impacting the overall academic performance of the students. So that has to be integrated as part of the academic piece of tier one instruction, not a separate thing that's just behavior. My, my concern is, is that what's happening with, as we get all of these behavior supports in our schools, that when a behavior issue happens, a teacher says, that's that person's problem to handle. I don't need to handle behavior. And that's, it's always my job to handle the behavior first and foremost. And it's only if the behavior's escalating to a certain level that it then, that it then goes to a tier two or a tier three piece. But I'm hearing conversations of where any behavior is just, the kid put their head on the desk, they have to go to the office. This kid is not participating, they're not engaged. That, that can't be the message that we're sending in that way. So that's part of why.
The teachers at the table where I was were both like, oh yeah, this is an academic goal. So given their immediate jumping on board and seeing this is integral to the other two, I was like, oh, okay. Because I had that same exact initial reaction, like, wait, should we put this somewhere else?
And you see wellness and safety, it'll make more sense too.
Any other comments about the goals? Well, then, let's go to the next slide. This just previews the draft of the strategies that they put with those goals. So I'll just give you a moment to skim through.
And this is the feedback from the steering committee editing these? Or are these the same ones that they looked at?
These are the same ones that they looked at last week. The steering committee went through and put, put comments and suggested changes. And so we've typed those up. We're going to give them to the cabinet along with the feedback that you all have to make changes next week. Yeah. So these will be revised.
And this, and this might be something where we just need to send this with you and then if we can get the feedback by next Monday, because we're meeting with Aurora next Tuesday, then we could have that in place if there's additional feedback because it's hard to digest all of that in this particular space. So if that works, okay.
Great. Should we, any initial comments or should we just move on to the next set of goals? Okay. All right, great. Let's go ahead and move. So opportunities for all, we have two draft goals that we need to do a little bit of work on. But by May 2029, increase the growth of the academic performance among diverse student groups by.
X percent.
A certain percent. Yep. Ensuring that all students, regardless of background, have equal opportunities to excel academically and reach their fullest potential. And by the end of possibly 2029, enhance representation in leadership roles and parent groups to reflect the diversity of our student population. Fostering inclusive decision-making processes and ensuring that all voices are heard and valued in shaping the educational experience for our students. And this was the draft. We did get some feedback from the steering committee, the cabinet will look at next week. But any thoughts about these two goals? Or questions?
Nick?
I guess leadership roles, is that specifically like within each school? Like staff and teachers or is that student leadership roles, all of it?
I think they were, I think they were looking at it from a variety of perspectives. So I think one is student leadership, but I also think a piece of this is also just increasing the representation levels in a school so that kids are seeing that we're, that we're making an honest effort to make sure that, that we're getting diverse perspectives into all of our schools. And I don't know that they knew how to specifically state that, if that makes sense. So if there's feedback on that, that would, that would be helpful. I know one of our other cabinet members talked about like opportunities for all is really that component of like, how are ML students doing? How are special education students doing, which is kind of your first bullet? But are there, you know, that's the growth score that's happening there. But, but in what other ways can we ensure that we're supporting even all teachers in those particular respects? Because I think a piece of the feedback that we're getting is this is very student-centered. So how are we providing opportunities for all teachers as well? Because they serve as grade-level team leads or department chairs. How are we ensuring that we're getting a broad perspective of individuals that are leading in the schools as well?
Any other comments or thoughts, questions? Yes.
So I see we're trying to go with it and maybe with, we've got all these different levels. So maybe this isn't the right level. But I feel like for that second one, it just means more like, what are we going to do to try to increase that representation, right?
Yes, and you'll notice that they struggled with that as well because when you go to the next slide, the strategies are policies and procedures. So there has to be something that's a lot more specific to that, right? Like, I, I do think there's this desire to figure this out and not, and not necessarily quite like, how, how do we, how do we measure this and what does this exactly look like? So.
Right. And I think this one is tricky because we are giving the opportunities, but that doesn't mean that people aren't taking those opportunities. So we can't say we're increasing it by this percentage or things like that. But what are we doing to make sure those opportunities are available? Yeah.
That's tricky.
Any barriers to those opportunities?
I'd really like to see something on, what about our neurodiverse students? Like, I think sometimes we don't talk about that. And I'd love to see more outreach. But I mean, I think that, we'll have to nail that down. But that's just one thing I was thinking of, is neurodiversity, because I don't know.
That's a great point.
Bonnie, you do want to switch us to the next slide? Great. So this is still kind of a draft in progress, but they're kind of thinking through what the strategies might be. Any other questions or comments mainly about the goals?
Are we giving suggestions?
You're going to give me suggestions by next Monday. Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to read through these.
Okay, then let's move on to our next category, wellness and safety. We have thought four, and I'm not sure what we're doing with that fifth bullet. But by May 2027, 100% of PCSD schools will implement PBIS. That result in the reduction of disciplinary incidents for all students by a certain percent.
Which is the same, very similar to the one in the first, right?
Okay. Yeah, and also, yeah, we have need to check those yours too. Okay, by May 2029, 100% of PCSD schools will implement research-based practices that will reduce absenteeism for all students and staff by 15% and increase the number of individualized health plans for all students and staff by 15%. 100% of schools will implement research-based practices, protocols, preventions, and preventions to ensure safety of all students and staff. And 100% of PCSD schools will implement research-based practices that will reduce the percentage of disciplinary incidents across student subgroups to 4% or lower. And then they're going to be working with, this might be a strategy, IT for a similar report to US.
Yeah, I think that's supposed to go under the strategy.
Okay, I wasn't, yeah. So questions or comments?
What does, I do, what does health plans mean? Is that insurance?
Is this supposed to be the IEP or?
I don't know. I wasn't prepared.
That was a question from the steering committee as well.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's a hindrance to put that into the plan or present here. There's a chance that it could be a section 504 plan. It could be a lot of different things. It's just, I know that, again, this was Siraj, who is our, again, special education coordinator, and then J.C. Garrison, who's our 504 coordinator. Those are the two people who put this, these plans together. So I'm thinking something along the idea.
Probably individualized education plan.
I think it's IEP.
Health plan doesn't make sense.
Yeah. I think part of this is that, one of the things we're identifying is that we're under-identifying individuals for special education right now. And so part of this was to be a lot more proactive in terms of what that looks like.
And will the NWEAs help with that identification?
That's part of that challenge. And also just greater training in, in child finding processes.
Any other questions or comments? This will be part of, I thought we have homework.
Yeah, let's just.
Yeah, homework.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And so then we've got a set of strategies which you can read through on your own. And let's go to, oh, there was a lot of strategies on this one. All right. Area four, stewards of resources. PCSD will exhibit fiscal responsibility as measured by a clean external financial audit each year and will receive Association of School Business Officers and Government Financial Officers Association Certificates of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The 2024-25 data will be gathered of trends for enrollment and budgeting through recent yearly reports to forecast and create specific financial goals to demonstrate fiscal responsibility and transparency. The district will gather data to determine recent trends in order to reduce the teacher turnover rate to an established percent after the baseline is established. And the district will create and implement an employee satisfaction survey geared toward all staff to evaluate benefits and compensation. A benchmark will be established and will work toward a satisfaction rating.
And a lot of the feedback that we provided is that these aren't measurable goals per se. Some of them are a checkbox, right? Like, we get the certificate, right? So we want to make sure that we're getting that every single year. But when we're gathering data to look at a recent trend, then it's like, we need to understand what that's going to increase by. And I know that's difficult if we don't have any baseline data. But then you establish the baseline data and say from there, we want it to improve by this percentage. So some of these actually fall under strategies in my mind more than they do goals, so.
I'd love for us to consider something about our capital facilities. Like, those are resources and those are things that people see and have.
Agreed.
Like, so I'd love to see somewhere reflected our, our buildings. And because I know that our, Kyle and his team are doing a great job with getting everything.
Brightly.
Yeah, with bright, like putting everything, so that we have a good way to replace things, right? And so it's, it's already started, but I would love for us to be really good stewards of our buildings. And I've had, when I was running and continuously, I've had people say, we need, we want to know what's your plan for the buildings? What are, and we're having all these community meetings. I would love to see that reflected here, but I don't know what that would look like.
Well, and that's one of the reasons for brightly is so we can create the baseline of what does it look like for 10 years? You know, what does our maintenance? And, and that's actually a really good idea and a goal is to, is specific to this percentage of work orders are completed within a certain number of days and we can actually track that. And so that, that's a, that's a. And so that's a great idea for a goal.
I'm writing it down, I'm writing it down right now, don't worry. I'm writing it down.
Okay, my homework's done.
You're done, Gina.
I know we have one other area of priority, but I do think there were, there was a lot of good input from the Steering Committee, and I think it would be better for the board to react to that data, if possible, before we give you, like.
For sure.
I just think it would be good if we, if they could see what people wrote in their packets and stuff, because there was a lot of input from the Steering Committee, too, that I think, I mean, maybe, maybe it doesn't matter, people can, the board can just give you their input, and then you have the Steering Committee input and go from there. I don't know.
Well, they are.
What the board would want to know.
Cabinet is going to do the revisions next week, and this is, the revised version is coming back to you on May 14th.
Okay.
So if, if, if you want to save your feedbacks to that.
Yeah, that's fine.
You'll see a changed version at that point.
Yeah, I guess the question is, will the Steering Committee feedback inform our feedback?
That's right.
That's what I'm wondering.
So do you, do we have access to that Steering Committee feedback that we could have before next Tuesday, as well, they're asking for Cabinet, so.
Oh, can the.
You want, you want that, Meg, you want to read Steering Committee feedback.
Yeah, I think it might help inform how I'm reflecting on this and thinking about it. But maybe it's not possible.
Yeah, well, we can share, I sent it to Wendy earlier today, so it's in a form where you're going to see this, and you're going to see comments on the side.
That's right.
Okay, but yeah, we're happy to share that with you.
Yep, I got it right here.
Okay, great, yeah, she can send it to you right now.
Thanks, Meg, just add it to our reading.
I'm just kidding.
You know, I actually, I just.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
They're always making more work. At least add like five more hours in the day, too.
Okay, and again, strategies for you to look at. And the last category, Family and Community Engagement, this needs to be flushed out, but they're going to have.
This was hard, and I think they really wanted some feedback about, how are you viewing this as a board in terms of how would you measure an increase in our family and community engagement? Because we're recognizing that, yeah, we can track how much a parent attends something, but are they actually engaged? Is there actually a two-way conversation that's actually resulting in student outcomes? It's just attending something is one level, but there's, but there's higher levels of what that engagement looks like, right? There's a tier two and a tier three level of engagement, so.
There are barriers to sometimes that tier one, right?
Or even barriers to doing more than tier one. Like, I can go to art night, but if you're asking me to send an email to the teacher, I'm going to be completely intimidated by that, and I'll do that. So, like, what is that, and how do we measure that?
Yeah.
You know?
Like, attending parent-teacher conferences, but then.
But does it actually result in fewer failing grades, for example?
Yeah.
Because the purpose of that is to help students be performing better, so if it, if it has no impact on a student's overall performance, is that really a form of engagement?
So, it's pretty plain they have this community council, not only do they have a pretty high parent-teacher conference attend, attendance, but the community council now has a reading thing every month. Parents have to turn in, how many minutes did you read to your kid, or your kid read to you, every month? So, I guess that would be the follow-up.
I understand we want to track how engaged people are, but I think our biggest focus should be on what we can control, which is create, and it looks like that's within the list here, right? Like, we want to invite that involvement, so what are we doing to increase, or to find different avenues to invite, to reach different people, right?
So that's what we measure.
That's what I would probably focus on more.
I like that.
Right? What specific things are we doing to create that welcoming school environment? Or, I think, I know our Title I schools have already been under certain parameters, like you need to have this many parent engagement nights, like, as a district, we should have some kind of a standard for things like that, right?
Every school, right?
Everybody, right? And then inviting the community, too. Sorry, Lisa.
No, no.
I was just going to say, I love that idea of what are we going to specifically do to engage businesses and other community partners in the work that we're doing. So, when I looked at these priorities, it was right after reading through all of our school improvement plans, and their needs assessment data, and how those plans were directed. And I was, so I was thinking of this from a framework of how will this tool actually be used? And if I were a principal making a school improvement plan, and I had five areas of priorities, and I needed a goal in each of those five, I actually feel like that might be arduous and difficult to actually succeed at those goals. Something I loved about what the district did with this round of these goals was at the very top, it was just really clear, we want goals in growth and proficiency, and in school, climate, and culture. And so our table took those headings, and we actually moved all of, because some of these are just sort of how you do your job well, right? And we moved all of these goals under three, those prior, two to three priorities, with the hope that then you can have a tool where, as a principal, you decide where within growth and proficiency, I'm going to really laser focus this year on my data and my work, and where within the culture or climate, which includes welcoming, and all of this requires good use of resources and these other things, where will I focus on improvement? And, because of, and I'm looking at like, a measurement tool that we could use to say, talk with Superintendent Dow about how she's doing with her job, one of the things I saw at NSBA was like, a clear set of these goals, here's our baseline data, and literally flipped red or green if they'd hit it that year. And they sat down with Superintendent, and they weren't like, shame on you for red, they were like, tell us the story of the red, tell us the story of the green, like, how do we, how do we keep hitting goals? But I just, I'm trying to picture that assessment tool with five priority areas, and it does feel overwhelming to me, but maybe I'm misinterpreting it. So I just wondered if, as Cabinet's looking through these, could these kind of collapse under a clearer two or three priorities, where these other things are part of it, because they are our values, it is part of our mission, it is our job to be a good steward, it is our job to welcome our community, and, but somehow, I don't know, I just, I just was thinking of that, because I read those plans, and I saw how much work was put into trying to really come up with a realistic goal, that they could really get their teachers and everyone on board with, that's driven by data. And then I'm trying to look at each of these goals, like, how will, how will I set that many goals, and how as a teacher, then will I use those goals to drive what I'm doing? Well, honestly, if it gets to be too many, even if I think they're all important, I actually am not.
That's true.
I might throw it all out, that's all I'm saying. So that's just a comment I have. I think that's great feedback, but I also don't see a teacher looking at all these goals. Like, this is our district plan, and some of these things are for the people at the other levels to focus in on the goal. And then the messaging that gets down to the classroom is more streamlined, but someone up in a different part of the district is looking at the bigger picture.
Yep, that makes sense to me, yeah, yeah.
Now, could we maybe narrow this down a little bit? I see value in looking into that.
No, but you're right, you're right.
But I don't want our teachers thinking that they need to be worried about being a steward of the resources, that's Devon's job, right?
Well, I think it is their kind of job.
I mean, yeah, they do.
I don't, I don't know.
They're involved in it on a smaller scale, for sure.
But their main thing is their academics and their safety and.
Right, but I'm just saying, if the school is, if we're, if it's our priority, we're going to hope, I hope it trickles down to everyone.
I'm saying we all have a different role to play in implementation of it, so we're each like different pieces of the puzzle.
I can see that, yeah, no, that's a good point.
Any other final comments about family and community engagement? Yes.
It's all about relationships. If a parent trusts a teacher, the parent will show up. And these don't have to be big academic things, they could be a fair, where the teacher's there, and the kids run up to the teacher, go, "Teacher, teacher, teacher!", and they're excited to be there with the teacher, and the parent gets to see that their kid really enjoys that teacher, right? And that way, if something happens, and the parent goes to the teacher, they have that, "Oh, my kid likes this person", you know, "They're a good person, and I need to talk to them." All of this is just about relationships. And so if we're talking about things to do, that's one thing. How do we build the relationships between the teacher and the kids, and the teacher and the parents? Because really, you know, principals can do that, but at the end of the day, if you want to solve behavior problems, it's all about relationships. It's all about relationships. And how to do that. And it's not, it's not a dog on a floor, it's how do we develop relationships with kids?
All right, so I'll move us to the next slide. And you can go ahead and slip to the next one. So, next steps, we are working over the next two weeks to make revisions, take the feedback we've received, we'll share that with you, Wendy will share it, so you can see what the Steering Committee shared. We're going to finish fleshing out the KPIs and bring the full draft of that back to you on May 14th for the first reading of the strategic plan, where you'll see the initial draft, and then you'll have some time to provide any additional feedback that you've gotten, and then we'll bring it back for adoption in June, if you feel that it's landed in a place that you feel comfortable with. So, we are also working with a graphic designer, and we just sent them the district, the worksheet to fill out, so we can start making mock-ups of what, like, the cover page will look like, and what the different inside parts will look like, and we'll start taking that content. So when it comes back, by June 11th, you'll see the full mock-up version, probably will not have it done by May 14th, but you'll be able to see all the content on May 14th, and then we'll be working on the cover and the inside pages.
So I actually had a question about that. So you are doing the design and the marketing, right?
We, yes, we, we contract with a graphic designer, unless the district wants to do it on their own, but most of districts have our graphic designers.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, come back with, we'll come back with a 12 draft, okay.
She wants it to look like that.
I want this, I want this.
Actually, okay, great.
Can I give it to you?
Yeah, I'll take it, and one of the questions on the worksheet is, do you want a simple one or two-page summary of the entire plan, which could probably fit all that.
We love the card size.
Okay. I want a three-by-five.
All right, I'll let her, we'll specify three-by-five, or whatever, five-by-five.
Is that five-by-six?
Four-by-six. Four-by-six, okay, great. This will be helpful, our graphic designer can do this, so.
Yes, we want, we want that.
Great.
Okay, I shouldn't say we, I.
Okay. Well, and usually, there is kind of a longer plan, and then usually there's some kind of short version that people can distribute, that's easier for people to digest, so.
Absolutely, that's, that's a digestible.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you.
Lisa, do you have anything?
So I know I'm worried about time, I know that I'm probably being annoying, but I do feel like we've invested and worked so hard with Aurora Laura on this, and we're at a key point, and so I don't actually, I would love, like, I loved hearing Jennifer's comment, too. I would love to make sure that the Cabinet builds a plan based on the priorities being clear, because if there is a discussion to make around that, I would love to hear from other board members around those priorities, and what you feel like should be or might be movable. It's not to say I don't want to hear what Cabinet also thinks about that, but if they do a bunch of work, and then we're like, well, let's get fewer priorities, or whatever, after that, I feel like that would stink.
Don't make us do more work.
So, if people care, or if you're fine with leaving all of the priorities, I just wanted to hear other people's feelings on that. Sorry, I know we're on time, but I think it's important because we've invested a lot of care in getting here. Do you want to, is there a list of just those priorities?
Yeah, let's go back a few slides.
Where now we have the five.
Right at the beginning, before all the.
Strategies and key performance indicators, yeah. So right now we have five of those areas?
Yeah, there, yeah, perfect.
That's it.
And I am working, I have worked with another district that did collapse them into three, and also tried to simplify that.
I like them, I'm not saying I don't, but I just want to.
So you're asking, should we collapse these as well?
Yeah. How do people feel, because, in terms of being able to really focus on priorities?
I wonder if, because family and community engagement is kind of part of measure, do we need that?
Okay, I was just looking at.
Something that schools already do.
Or do Opportunities for All go with family and community, you know, like, I know we're going to get at them through different specific avenues, but, yeah.
Or you could change the title to try and incorporate two together.
Or how do we, how do we incorporate Opportunities for All and family and community engagement in academic achievement, wellness and safety, and maybe not stewardship?
So, as I was looking at this, and I actually feel like there's three that are really important. I feel like academic achievement, because in that way, the way in which you're going to get students to be successful is we do have to be providing those opportunities for all students, we have to be looking at our disaggregated data, we have to be identifying barriers that are preventing students from being successful. All of that, a lot of those strategies that fall under, or that would fall under Opportunities for All can fall under academic achievement, specifically tied to a goal.
Could you say academic achievement for all?
And I think the family and parent and community engagement is a piece of that as well, but I also think the wellness and safety pulls in, the family and community engagement, and stewardship of resources. I think it's important to our community, we are funded through taxpayer dollars, that we are very transparent about how we use our time with students, how we use our money with students, how we are, and that, and that stewardship of that resources is actually leading to this academic achievement. I think maybe we could incorporate the others under those three, so academic achievement, wellness and safety, and stewardship of resources. I don't know, that was a thought, to just try to simplify it. Stephen Covey says, if you try to do more than two things at once, you're just going to fail at everything, so I can't get it down to two, I can get it down to three.
But we could write academic achievement for all, and make sure we're really intentional about opportunities for all, and we know that also things like seeing representation, all of the things help with that, right? And then, I like, like, could wellness and safety, and could those things come under culture and climate? Like, do you know what I mean, like, is there a heading that pulls them all in, and you can set, I don't know.
The other district that I worked with that boiled it down to three, put, yeah, academic achievement and somehow equity with it, which would kind of, yeah, the other, then they had some kind of culture and climate one, that they pulled family and community engagement, because they put sense of belonging and making sure that belonging applied to all, you know, and then they had, their last one, they called systemic alignment, but it has, it was more about the operations system, resources.
Yeah, because the culture and climate could fall under wellness and safety, like, you're right. Right, because you're well when you have a.
Yes, and with your families, okay.
Yeah, and even.
I like the three that went with that.
Yeah, because the family and community can still fall in with all those, right? How do you, how are we engaging within our academic achievement for our students, parent conferences, right? Wellness, safety, behavior, whatever that is.
Supporting family wellness.
Yes, yes.
I, I like the idea of the family and community engagement being part of something like a culture and climate. I worry if they say, oh, it's just automatically part of academics. Well, it should be, but if we're not actively calling it out, it'd be to let that fall by the wayside and forget that it impacts academics, right? But if we change that heading for wellness and safety to include the culture we're creating for our families and communities as well, I think.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily see the value of consolidating the priorities, just because I think these are all priorities, where we do need to get something done in each of these, we do need to be better at our engagement, we need to be better at academics, and doing something in each of these, we are, we're organizing ourselves to have an actual plan for how to do that. And also, at some point, we're, we can end up categorizing everything as, oh, we're educators, right? We're doing education, right? Like, right, like, I think five is a perfectly fine number to have, and that these are different enough that we can have separate goals in each of these categories.
I still think we should collapse them.
So at least the three, you said, Wendy, academic achievement for all, wellness and safety, and stewardship of resources?
Yeah. And the only reason that we originally put in safety, I think from the Steering Committee's perspective, was because it came up across all three stakeholder groups. And it wasn't, it wasn't just about culture and climate, it really was about the physical safety of individuals, it is a concern. And so we didn't feel like we wanted to not emphasize that when we got that really explicit feedback from people.
And, well, do you feel like, because I, I hear what you're saying about having more, I just wonder, do you feel like when we have those different values at the beginning, like, do you know what I'm saying? Like, would that be a way to, like, say we, like, we do. Like, would that be a way to like say we, like we do prioritize all of these things? I'm just curious to know, because I don't want to disregard what you're saying.
My thought is, well, like the values are really the more public-facing part. Whereas this is guiding a lot more of what the district will be doing. And I see value in having a lot of different category, I mean, not a lot, but I think five categories with goals in those priorities is, we do have needs in each of these.
Would you feel like if we put the goals, still had those goals, but they were under fewer categories, it would matter, or do you not?
At that point, it's just semantics, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, just curious.
And you could almost put safety and security under stewards of resources. Because when you talk about the secure, actual physical security, that's part of buildings and that, and where Gina brought up the great point about having the long-term capital plan, that could also fit within that. Not trying to complicate anything, but I'm just trying to help.
And then, I love you, Will, I'm a fan of collapsing it as well. The thing that I worry about is, if we take out family and community engagement, will that be, like, will the community look at that and say that we don't value that? I mean, maybe not, I don't know, I just, that's the only thing I worry about with taking that out.
It's sated as a value and I feel like if it's woven into all of our schools' cultures of making sure people actually feel like they belong there.
If we have specific goals. So you have specific goals for those under the three big ones. So each, each under the three ones need to have something about family and community engagement.
Right, because we know it moves the needle. Like those relationships that she was talking about earlier, relationships with our students and teachers and also relationships with our family and our community really impact. There's a lot of research to show how that really impacts the success of our students and also the wellness of our teachers and everyone in that system. So I, I think it should be intentionally, there should be goals around it.
Then I'm with Will, we need to make sure we have goals around it and then we keep it as a category so it doesn't get forgotten.
Well, we could just reduce to four, take out opportunities for all, I guess that would be.
I could eliminate the two of them.
I think the, I think, I just think, I think, yeah, you're going to have to prioritize what's going to be the most important. Because there's no, there's, it's going to be very, very difficult to really piece through all of these things all of the time, right? And so, we're really trying to make it so, you know, how is this the living document for a teacher? Then we're going to have to really direct them and say, what we really want you to focus on is we really want you to focus on your classroom environment, those relationships, right? And academic performance for your students, right? Those are, those are the two things that are in your wheelhouse that you have control over. So, we just have to be okay with taking those different categories and saying, different people are going to have different responsibilities tied to this. And that it's, that's how we have to work as a system to make this, this all go together. And the only way that I think you don't lose the family and community engagement pieces is if you change the wording of wellness and safety. So if you shift that more to culture and community or something like that, then I think it kind, it kind of could encompass that. I don't know.
When we looked at your data from surveying parents, students and teachers, can you help remind us what the sort of top three priorities were in the different classes? I feel like I kind of remember, but I feel like in each one it was social and emotional, like there was a social, emotional wellness piece.
Yeah, mental health.
Academic achievement piece.
Yeah, and I believe safety. I'd have to pull it up.
And then teachers, right?
Teacher recruitment and retention.
There were five, right?
Yeah, we looked at the top five in each one. And I'm happy to pull that, it's on my computer.
No, it's fine.
Okay, okay. We can also resubmit that out if people.
I mean, I think, I think these five are based on those things. Like, I don't think that these came out of nowhere. I really do think it was where we were trying to train, triangulate those things. I think that the question is, do you feel okay about, because whenever you put something underneath something else, you are kind of suggesting that either it's a path to achieve this so it doesn't stand on its own, which is fine, like that can happen, or, or you're, you're kind of suggesting it's not as important.
Has anyone thought of just reducing the amount of goals under each one of these priorities? Is that?
Right.
Could also help, I'm talking about.
Two goals under each one, three goals under each one.
Because in that case, five priorities is fine, if we have like two major goals under each one. So that, I think that's also another path we could take, right? If we really feel strongly about these five areas.
I think that gets hard when you start thinking about being a steward of resources, because part of steward of resources was employee recruitment and retention piece as part of that, or wellness and safety falls under that, with capital facilities, how we're using taxpayer dollars, like I, how we use our time.
But again, they are, well, you know, priorities. So it is okay to prioritize some of those. But not missing them doesn't mean they're not a goal, right?
Or they're not something you're not working on.
Job description to do.
Right. For sure, it just means you're probably not going to measure it as a board. So you need to decide as a board, what is important enough for you to measure that you want to report back to the public and say, this is what Provo City School District has been able to accomplish. And, and based on, you know, what we hear from the public, what are those priorities that are the most important to them? I mean, I hear all the time, it is teacher retention and recruitment. What are you doing to help support teachers? Like, our, our teachers are our most valuable resource. I hear that time and time and time from every single place that I go, right? And, and the research shows us that. And then I hear about, I want academic achievement for our students and I want mental and social well-being for our employees and students. Those are unilaterally what I hear. And I, and whatever you hear as a board, these priorities and those goals need to reflect that. Because you want to feel good about illustrating those measurements. I don't, it becomes, it'll be frustrating for this group back here if it's like, I don't even know why we're measuring that. I don't want to hear that.
I like the three, based on that question you asked, academic achievement, wellness and safety, whether or not we need to rename that, stewards of resources? I think, and you're right, those are the ones that I get asked about. How are you using my money? How are the teachers doing and how are my students doing? Are they well? And how are the academics? I think those are the three that I get the most.
I think they're easier to be.
And you can measure them.
Measure.
Because opportunities for all are hard to measure and family and community engagement is also hard to measure.
And then I would just put a plug in for a goal under one of those three categories specific to like teacher, like how we're caring for our teachers and retain, you know what I mean? Like teacher retention and like, can we have some specific goals around?
That can go under our stewardship of resources. They're our biggest resource.
So if we are set on three priorities, then I would suggest instead of stewardship of resources, we could combine that with the community engagement and make it something like community trust, where, right, the community's trusting us, that we're managing our resources well, but also that we're, we're interacting with the community well.
I like that a lot, building good relationships. I like the community trust better. How do we measure that though? Well, but it's a priority area, how you measure it is based on a goal. And you would set goals similar to the ones we had there under some of our stewardship of resources, but then also around, you know, like however we decide we're going to measure family engagement and some of those other things that were on there, right? And it does come down to relationships and it's hard to measure, but I think having a clear priority on that is awesome.
Okay, so, I think.
We're still here.
Yeah, all right. So, are people good with us collapsing it down to three then? And having cabinet kind of take a stab at reorganizing this? Okay, so that's what we're going to do next week is we'll work on making some bigger changes. Both using the feedback and then from, that we heard from the steering committee and then making the larger reorganization changes that we heard from you. And you will see our revised version on May 14th. If it's not, like, you know, if we need to move out the July or June 11th date because we're still working on it, that's totally fine. But we will bring you our next version on May 14th and then we will see how you feel about that version and whether we need to set an extra work session to bring you in due when or whether we're kind of in the right, heading in the right direction. So, May 14th will be the next time we bring something back, yes.
Could we just get that draft, maybe like five days, seven days? So we have time to look at it before you come, so we, I feel like I could be better informed that way.
Yeah, let's see Wendy, if we can, if we think we can have cabinet have that done by then.
Say that, I'm sorry, I missed that. Just have the draft to us before the 14th, like maybe the Friday before so that we have time to look over it before getting together so we can have a a discussion instead of spending a lot of time reading it while we're here.
That's a kind of a tight turnaround for cabinet, but if they have time.
Our biggest issue is just finding time right now to be able to get together, that's our struggle, so we'll figure it out.
Five more hours?
I know, it really is true.
Figure it out, well.
Figure it out.
We can pay people for five extra hours a day.
Or the other option would be maybe to, if cabinet needs a little more time, maybe to change the May 14th date to a slightly later one so they have a little bit more time to work.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, so we will, we will try and figure out a way to get it to you in advance. But we do need to figure out with cabinet, just because it's kind of a lot of work on restructuring. We need to make sure that they have enough time to do that well. So, I guess Wendy will be back in touch with, when we can come back with the revised draft, so. Okay, great, any other final questions? All right, then I look forward to coming back to you at a future date soon. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Aurora. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have about 25 minutes, so we need to end. So Devon, are you okay squishing the budget discussion into about 25 minutes rather than 30? That would move our boundary study discussion and our school and trust and SAP discussion into the business meeting later, which that is doable, right? Is that, are those two things okay to move? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll do that, we'll go ahead and move item number seven, budget discussion.
Oh, sure.
And then we will, just for, just I'll state now that we'll plan on moving items number eight and nine to the business meeting for discussion there.
Full please.
Do you want me to sit here or do you want me to stand up there and point to you?
You should stand up there and point to you, because there's a lot to point to.
Plus I've been sitting here for a long time. All right, so everybody knows budget is my favorite discussion. And there's, so this is some of the information that we'll provide in our public meetings. And any feedback that you have, if there's things that we're missing, there are pieces that are not going to be in here because they are specific to our, to our public meetings on some of the specific capital needs. But I'm, I'm just going to go through some of this, you've probably already heard and so, but this is an education tool for everyone, so let's.
Can we get a copy of the slides to?
Yeah, I just, I also just wanted to point out that Devon has built this based on questions that have been submitted by constituents specific to our budget and our overall financial health. And so this is an attempt to kind of put it into a very logical format to answer those questions. So she's not going to go question, answer, question, answer, but these questions are embedded into this particular presentation.
And there may not be a specific answer to, you know, to the question, but the context of what I talk about may answer those questions. So, as we go through, I'm just going to go through a little bit of the history of our state funding. So the, the WPU was created in 1973. It is as old as I am. Maybe it was created on my 50, or my very birthday, you never know. So that, the funding structure is based and it was meant to equalize funding throughout the, throughout the state so that every student was funded at the same level. And that has worked for some and not worked for some, especially when you're looking at overhead of smaller districts, which was what the purpose of the necessarily existed small schools funding that has been talked about a lot and then dropped and talked and dropped. And so, but the whole purpose of the WPU is really to give that normalcy of how much is funded per student. There, the, there's a minimum school program and that is our basic funding and that is the full WPU that is granted. This year, the WPU is $4,494 per student. For context, it was $4,208 this year. So, you know, when you're talking a hundred and some odd dollars per student, it's not a lot. So, the, but in that, so the $4,494 is the amount per student, but districts are required to, to provide local funding for some of that. So the state sets a basic tax rate, so you'll see on tax, there's a basic levy and that is set by the state. We are required to bring in that percentage of our property taxes for local support for our K-12. So when they say that they're funding us at $4,494, that is only partially true because they're only giving us enough, that where the, the local funding makes up the difference of the total. So if we were fully funded for this year, we'd get about 59 million, almost 60 million. But they're expecting us to bring in 14 million of that in local funding and that is not set by us, that's set by the state. And that adds up to the 59 million. So, they created the new uniform school fund, which is primarily funded with the personal income tax. There's been 15 bills since 2013 that has mandated what can and can't come out of that. And the, but it is constitutionally protected to have that be the uniform school program or fund specific for education. Now, they have made adjustments to that over the years for higher ed and there are some things in the works that, that can possibly take away some of that earmark in this coming election. And funded in that minimum school program is K-12, special ed, CTE, class size reduction, the professional staff. Now that is not admin staff here, that's really for licenses and to create that, that funding of people who have a little bit of a higher education and at risk. So at risk used to be what we call below the line. So when you hear us refer to above the line and below the line, above the line are the items in the minimum school program, below the line is always funded at a different rate. So for example, transportation is funded at a lower WPU rate. I think at this next year it's $3,317. So it's a percentage of it. So, that there's, they, they think that there's a lot of logic to it. In some areas there may be, but other areas it's a little bit difficult when we're trying to fund students at a specific level. So at risk, moving it above the line protected that line so that it's, and it gives districts a little bit more control to decide what their at-risk populations are. The other minimum school program, those are the items below the line. Those are things like TSSP, TSAA, school and trust, youth in custody, adult ed, and then transportation. So those are, that's the $3,317. I'm glad I remembered that, because sometimes I don't. So let's go to the next slide. This will show us our state revenue for the last six years. So you can see this, this big bump or big dip was the, the loss of our e-school funding. But as we start talking about that, there's, most of that was expenses that also went off the books. So when you say, we lost all this state funding and now what happened to all the money that you were bringing in? Well, a lot of that went to expenses. Just for reference, this year here, our, our e-school cost $8 million. This year here, it costs $900,000. So when you're looking at that, so a lot of people are assuming, well, now we're really short funds. We're not, I mean, we are tight, but we're not like now trying to grasp for the rest of this money. The expenses just went down at the same level. So when you're looking at, well, where did all the money go? The money went away, the expenses went away, which meant that the pain of the loss of revenue was less. But then a lot of people thought, well, we had all that revenue, so we should still have a lot of that left, which is not true. So, and there's limitations of the state of how much you can actually keep. So when someone says, well, when it was doing really well, you should have saved money. Well, there are limitations to what we can restrict, restrict as the board and how much restricted fund balance of some of the programs. Like trust lens is a great example. When we had COVID hit, the, the state took off the, the restriction of having more of, you had to have no more than 10% carryover in your trust lens. They allowed that to go through just because of the level of, of COVID funding that was coming through from the federal government so that they could save that as the needs, as their specific school needs came about. So, keep going. So we can, so this is, this is just the last 10 years of our WPU. So when you look at it, it looks like a fairly significant increase. So when you look at it, it looks like a fairly significant increase. But when you're looking at the cost and what other states are doing, this is what we, the state spends per, per year. And this is without federal funding in Utah. This is Washington and New York. So, you know, when you're looking at state's support for education, our state's support for education is still pretty low when you're looking at other places. So let's keep going. So then we have our local revenue. And our local revenue consists of property taxes and that's 75% of our, of our local revenue. And that's the only source of ongoing operating revenue that districts really have, have the ability to control. Whether we raise, if we have additional expenses, like there are some, there are some things that we've had to let go this year because of other things that we had more important. This is the only way that we have to be able to make sure that we can do some of those programs that may be really important. Interest on investment, that's 8%, but that is very, very volatile. So based on what the market does, if the market goes down half a percent, if they, if they make any move in the Fed, automatically that interest will start going down. So that's not something that we generally budget on ongoing. We can budget some, but it's, we generally are pretty conservative with what we budget. And when there's extra, then we can maybe have a little bit of flexibility. Child nutrition sales are about 1%. So when you're looking at what's being brought in from selling lunches and, and that is not just the student lunches, that's also adults. That's about 1% and then other local revenue is 16%. So we are given an approved indirect rate every year that we can charge some of those federal and state grants that are restricted for certain purposes. That, that brings in, so our, our unrestricted rate, which is a lot of our state programs, is about 17%. And our, our restricted rate, which is most of our federal programs, is about 4.83%. So that's what we charge to be able to pay for, you know, administrative costs, purchasing costs. It's really the central services. So the, when you look at the restricted indirect, that is specific to that, the function 2500, which is human resources business, the district or network, you know, so things that impact the district as a whole and their operation. And then the non-restricted does the 2500, which is that admin, and 2600, which is the operation and maintenance of facilities. Because generally those programs that, that we can charge indirect are taking some of our spaces. So like adult ed, youth in custody, you know, those kinds of programs. Then you have school fees, costs for field trips, and then other revenue that comes in. So I could give you a list, but in the interest of time, we'll keep going forward. But this will show you about our local revenue.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay.
This is our local revenue over the last seven years. And so this is our last truth in taxation here. And then we'll go through some of what we did with that truth in taxation the last, the last time. And then you'll see it levels out. So we haven't seen a huge increase. The, really the bump in the, the, the local revenue is mostly that interest income at the moment. So truth in taxation, so what we did with truth in taxation the last time was WASAT and Shoreline. That was the main piece of it. So that was for that lease revenue bond payment that we have to pay because it can't come out of the debt service fund because that is specific to the debt service levy. And when you do a lease revenue bond, you have to have a different kind of revenue that, that comes through. And then the other piece of it was retaining employees. And that year we gave teachers a, a pretty good increase. The issue that we had, because one of the, one of our main focuses has been trying to at least be competitive with our neighboring districts. At the same time, those districts were also maxing out their tax levies and also doing big increases. So it didn't catch us up. It did, it did, you know, help, but it didn't catch us up the way that we thought. So that, that would have been really nice. So at the same time, we did a significant study on the, on the positions throughout the district. And that was teachers, social workers, instructional assistants, all of those types of positions. And looking at how, how schools were using some of those, those resources. And in that process, discovered that there was a lot of inequities between our schools of how they were using those resources. And so a lot of focus has been made this year in creating an equitable model so that we're giving very specific guidelines and, and what really works. What the research says is, makes the biggest impact. And so there also at the, in 2023, part of that discussion was the collapsing collapse, the class size reduction. So this, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, a lot of schools paid for instructional assistance out of that, which we allowed them to do for an extra year beyond what we were going to. We informed them two years ago, let them use it one more year. And this year, we're now using it for what the purpose is that the legislature actually gave it to us for, which is to decrease class size or make sure we can match some of those classes, especially in some of those schools that are smaller, that we need to put two teachers in each grade level so they've got choice. And so those classes are, instead of making it large or just having a half a teacher, they, if we have two teachers in each of those grade levels. And that's what that will help pay for. So that was a lot of our discussion. Then we have our federal revenue. So we received four different rounds of ESAR or GIRS funding, which is all basically the same thing, just awarded from different places. We received the first round, which was about 7 million, the second round, which was about 20 million. And in between, we had the GIRS funding, which was right around 5, 600,000. So most of this, so when we go beyond and you see the, the enrollment, when we were looking at all of our FTE calculations and our enrollment projections a couple of years ago, as we were starting to get back in from COVID, there were a lot of schools that would have lost FTEs because their populations and their enrollments were, were further down. So one of the things, because of the incredible impact that COVID had, we decided that our main focus with that ESAR funding was to keep those teachers and keep those class sizes artificially low so that we could respond to that, the impact. Because each school had unique issues that needed to be, needed to be fixed or to be worked on. So that was the main reason, that's the main thing we spent our, our ESAR funding on. So also to answer a question of, you know, well, why did you have enough then? It's because we kept a lot of people in the classroom that we wouldn't have been able to keep with our normal funding model. So the state also had some significant limitations to its use. The federal government gave us guidelines of what we could use it for. And when we submitted reimbursement requests to the state, they decided they didn't like what we spent it on and couldn't see the, 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 what's the word I'm looking for? Relevance will work. So the relevance of how, how we're responding to the, to COVID. So every year I get this survey. And I wish I could push it on to someone else, but it is 123 pages of what I spent ESAR funding on the year before. And I have to identify every single thing and what it was specifically for. So was it for learning loss? Was it to keep class sizes low? I mean, there is a whole list. And it, it's a pretty onerous, and, and I mean, they want student demographics, teacher demographics, how many FTEs did you have total? So they're asking a lot of questions that don't really have an impact on, on what they're looking for, but we're still required to provide that. So every time we sent reimbursements up to the state and they had things like, for example, in the federal guidelines, it was very specifically spelled out that the ESAR funding should be used for like making more kids aware of performing arts opportunities or sports opportunities to get them back involved in school and to help. The state came back and said, we don't see the relevance to, to, and because we'd spent some of that on that because it was specifically called out in the federal guidelines. And when we pushed back on them, they said they get to make the choice. And so, you know, as we're going through all of these plans and, and looking for it, we needed to have a, a different plan where payroll was, you know, salaries and benefits were one that they didn't question a lot because we could justify putting people in there. So when you look at the next year, we decided to go ahead and do some principal allocations to the schools, that they were allowed to hire additional instructional assistants with the caveat, when we gave it to them, not to do anything that was, they were going to expect to keep going because it was one-time funding to help with the response to this. So whether that was an additional teacher or additional social worker, additional counselor, all of the schools used it differently. There were a lot of instructional assistants purchased with it. And that, and so that makes a big difference. And the funding for that doesn't carry over. That's, that's funding that ends and it's not something that we can say, well, we'll just hold on to it and spend it later. There are definite deadlines for, for that, those expenditures. All right, next one. So this is instruct, this is just instructional assistance for the last 10 years. So you're looking, so our, it's been fairly steady until the last few years of COVID and then it went up significantly. About 25% of those were those one-time federal dollars or federal dollars that have been decreased. So we lost about $700,000 in Title I revenue this year because of some issues with our census data and doing an average based, instead of not having, in the absence of not having free introduced like price data for a couple of years during the waiver from the federal government for child lunches. So the principals still have that discretion, some discretionary dollars. If I added it all up of what they have discretionary wise, they've got almost $10 million between all of the schools. Now that is dependent on, on their enrollment. And some of them will use it for a lot of their operating costs at the schools. So some of that it's already spoken for, but we're also really working on maybe streamlining some of those items in, in their budget to be able to free up some more for them. So next one, we're going to breeze through this. So this is, this is this year. So this shows Alpine's class sizes. This is Nivo's class sizes and this is our class sizes for this year in K-6. So you can see a lot of our grades are way lower than the, than the average in our, our area. If you broaden it to other districts, it's about the same. If you take in charter schools, that's where you start seeing all of the state class size averages way lower. It's because it takes into consideration all those charter schools and they're, they can keep their class sizes much smaller. Okay, let's keep going. So this is our enrollment. You can see this is all schools. So this shows that e-school drop. And then it also has, this, this year's enrollment is 13,450, I think, for, as of right now. Okay, keep going. And then this is just the traditional schools. So, and you can see even at the traditional schools where everybody says, well, it's an e-school issue. It's not an e-school issue, it's an, it's all schools. There's a few elementary schools that have stayed pretty steady or have gone up over the last five years. But I would say probably 10 out of the 13 elementary schools have all dropped significantly in enrollment over the last 10 years, eight years. So when we went through, through all of the budget process, we went through our staffing ratios and went to our enrollment projections, standardizing our class sizes, back to what we've had in policy for a long time of 27 and a half at the elementary schools, 28 and a half at the high schools and 25 at independents, just because of the specialized populations. And then all of the grade levels at all schools have a minimum of two teachers and the DLI and CAS have also included some extra ones because you have to have a, a minimum outside of the, those specialized programs. We also looked at evaluating all of the other services provided to make sure that what we were doing was in line and we were providing pretty fair and equitable treatment. And then what we still needed, what is, what is research-based? You know, for, for me, I know putting a teacher in for tier one is a lot more important than putting in a couple of instructional assistants. Not saying that instructional assistants aren't important, but they know how to run those interventions. We also, and that has to do with, we're an improvement district. We have to make sure that we are showing some improvement and making sure that, that those interventions are well-done is really important to bringing that up. We have a lot of unfunded mandates. So when you're looking at, there's a lot of questions about, well, why are we putting more people in the schools? Well, it helps fund, it helps with some of those unfunded mandates that are required by the state that are requiring another person that is not a principal or a teacher. And it helps to solve those problems. And then a restructuring at the district office level. We really, Wendy spent a lot of time looking and seeing what, what do other districts do? What do we need to do? What does it need to look like? So that we can get as many resources out to the schools as possible. And that, that meant each department is going to have a maximum of one director and one assistant director, which brought some of those departments, those positions also are pushed out to the schools as those assistant principals. So when you're looking at, well, if there's all these resources to do all of this, then, you know, why aren't we doing X instead of Y? The, the, most of those positions were not new people, all of them were not new people coming into the district. They were replacing positions that were already here. All right, three minutes, I can get through the capital fund in three minutes. So our capital fund is where we have our capital projects and maintenance. So not our custodial, our custodial comes out of our, our general fund, but it's for the maintain, it's the benefits and salaries of all our maintenance workers that are going around. Now Kyle's done an amazing job of really trying to bring a lot of those services that they were actually contracting out into the district, like rodent removal, which is something I can't stand, or, or fertilizing, or, you know, a lot of those things, the replacement of the, the filters and the, so they were able to bring a lot of that in and save quite a bit of money. Property taxes are only way of getting money into the capital projects fund, which is why when you're looking at, there's a separate levy for capital, that, that is one of them. And that is where, this is also the fund where the transfer happens from, to the municipal building authority for that debt. We also, to Gina's point, are, are working on a, on a long-term capital, a capital plan, which will include also in our next conversation with the boundary study and all of that is encompassed in that long-term plan. What do we need? What do we need to do with those buildings? What do we, and then saving versus bonding. And the reason why we don't try to save money is because as you're, you spend so much time saving, the costs for those buildings go up. If we had tried to save for 10 view, you know, for 10 years, now the cost would make it, we'd have to do another 10 years. So the bonding just makes it a little bit more efficient to get it done a little faster. Okay. So the, I'll just quickly go through the differences. You have GO bonds and municipal building authority bonds or local building authority bonds, depending on which district you're looking at. GO bonds, they have a, they have a lower interest rate. And MBA bonds generally have to come from one of our sources, but you don't have to go out to the voters for it, especially when you have a failed bond. You have, you have, there are some projects that still need to be done. But it also limits the ongoing projects. And I just want to give you an example of what the possibility would have been had we had, so we're going to skip forward a couple of slides. So right here, so this is, this is our current municipal building authority bond schedule. So this is what we pay, this is what we pay each year in interest. So this is the column I want you to look at. So this is our interest for the whole time of the bond is 43 million. Almost 44 million is what we pay in interest. Okay, so go to the next slide. If we'd been able to do a GO bond instead, interest would have been 30.5 million. So we're talking almost $15 million extra just because we went, and that's just because the, the market for municipal building authority bonds is not as rich or as favorable because the GO bonds is based on our debt, debt rating. That is a national, the municipal building authority is not. They take it into account, but it's not the same. So let's keep going and I'll just give you, so this is our debt service levy that we've had over the last 10 years. And I cut off the, but I'll fix it. So you can see in 2015, it was, this is when we issued our, our bond for Provo High. And then you can see that it's gone down ever since. Most of that is because you have the correlating going up of the property values. So this is our property values over the same period as the property tax levy for debt service. And you can see this year, I'm projecting it to go down a little bit, but also our valuation for, this is the first year that they're projecting our valuation in Provo to go down just a slight bit. So I think that's it. So I did, I went, got through capital in three minutes. But there is a, a lot of that information. Is there any questions that you have? Does that answer some of the, the questions that were specific to what you've been hearing? Does that answer some of the, the questions that were specific to what you've been hearing? And next month, I mean, our next meeting, you'll have the first reading of the budget for next year. With the second one, I felt a little bit like Aurora Laura, our first reading on the 14th and our second reading on the, on the 11th. But that is the date we legally have to approve our budget unless we did a truth in taxation. So, thank you.
Great, is there a motion to adjourn our study session?
I hope it reads during our study session.
Okay, adjourned. We will reconvene in the PDC and.
As quick as possible.
I want three minutes, because I know that's impossible.
Awesome. You're very smart.